Good evening. I want to call the June 4, 2024 regular scheduled board meeting to order. I will ask Commissioner Perkins to say a prayer for us and Commissioner Mauley and Latifah Fledges, all staying please.
That's right. God our Father have we come to give our honor for your presence. Lord, we just thank you, God, for your truth and blessings that keep us through these terrible times. Lord, you have blessed us and kept us alive to be in this place this time. Ask for God to look on this board, dear God, as we come together, dear God, to consider and to handle the things that come before this board for the better of this community. And God ask you to be blessed, dear God. Rest our decision, dear God, to see that nature, dear God, gather hearts and minds of God, and we do the right thing, dear God, for this community, for this county. And God ask for you to bless the ones that come out tonight, dear God, to serve citizens, dear God, you bless them in your mighty way. And God we ask the special blessing of those with sickness and body, going through terrible times, and ask for God to bless the bereaved and us. And God look upon our nation, dear God, in mighty way. Oh, God, that you're blessed and guide the hearts and minds of those who got a new ship in our nation, dear God. Ask for you to look upon those, dear God, that's all, all, dear God, that's fighting up out there, dear God. Ask for, dear God, to look upon children, dear God, that have your way, dear God. And should you keep your praise and glory for Christ's sake. Amen.
Let's be certified of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Thank y'all for coming. We'll get started here. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the May 16, 2024 emergency meeting, the May 21 regular scheduled meeting, and the May 28 emergency meeting. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Motion approved.
So, how a motion by Commissioner White, who was the second? Second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next item on the agenda is public concerns and comments. Anyone wish, Mr. Broders, anyone from the public wishing to speak comes to the front, state your name and address for the records. Welcome, Mr. Broders.
My name is Keith Broders. I live at 201 Ranchara Street Northwest here in Live Oak, Florida. As most of you know by now, I'm a real fanatic when it comes to the Constitution and the Bill of Rights, and I wanted to share something with you that I think is crucially important. Probably one of the greatest crimes in the history of world was the Holocaust and the murder of six million innocent men, women, and children by the Nazi henchmen Adolf Hitler had employed. And the thing I want to share with you is that there was a trial at Meerenburg, and the Nazi war criminals were put on trial for crimes against humanity, and they used the defense that they were just following orders and that they should be forgiven because they were just doing what they were told. Well, if the Nazi war criminals had followed the example set by the Hebrew midwives, there would have been a completely different outcome. The Hebrew midwives were told by the Pharaoh to kill all the infant boys and drown them in the river. The Hebrew midwives said, no, we're not going to do it. We answer to a higher authority than the Pharaoh. And this is something that we, I believe, need to do today. We need to realize that had the Nazi war criminals listened or followed the example of the Hebrew midwives, six million lives would have been saved, plus millions of other people who died as a result of Hitler's war of aggression. So, one thing I want to mention is that there comes a time when county commissioners and other public officials are called upon to make tough decisions. Sometimes you are put into a position where you are being asked to obey an unconstitutional directive or mandate from the state or public government. And frankly, we need to be like the Hebrew midwives. We need to ask the question, what is the right thing to do? We need to listen to our conscience. We need to listen to the still small voice and listen to the word of God and follow his counsel. And in the case of the COVID situation, obviously, we were completely unprepared for that, and we here in Swanee County, most of the other counties, just went ahead and did what they were told because they weren't prepared, they weren't well educated on what is their duty and their responsibility. And when you take an oath to the Constitution and to the Bill of Rights, you're not taking an oath of obedience to the governor or to the president. You're taking an oath to the rule of law. So, anyway, I just want to share that with you, and hopefully, if we ever have another situation like we did before, we will stand up against the governmental imposed tyranny and do what is right by following the Bill of Rights. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Broders.
Thank you.
Welcome, ma'am. Name and address for the record.
Stacy Griffith, 1013, No Name Road, Brennaford. I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention. We're starting the process of getting our Fourth of July Festival together. I have applications if anyone is interested in doing a booth, or if anyone is interested in sponsoring anything. The festival starts at noon. We have a cornhole tournament, a car show, bedrock derby, all that throughout the day. Parade will be at 7:30, and then fireworks at dark.
And you've been on the fourth?
All of the green light, on the fourth. Yes, let's say the fourth. Yep.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Ah, I'm not a political person.
Name and address for the record.
Gail Kogan, 11251, 147 Place in Live Oak. However, I'm staying at the Swanee at the State Shelter. My house was destroyed by Agelia, and God blessed me by the ship for Agelia to give me a site-built house or replace my mole. I just finished paying the place off, eighty thousand dollars, and I'm told I can't build on my property because I have two acres and zoned in a five-acre area. How could I buy two acres if it's not supposed to be there? So, I was looking for a variance or some kind of aid of what I can do with my two acres. That's worthless. I mean, ship wants to give me a house, and I can't because zone even allow it.
Can, would you mind, can we get with you after that? This is the first I've heard of that situation.
Yeah, what else?
What's your name, ma'am?
Gail Kogan, K-O-G-A-N.
K O G?
A-N.
Yeah, I mean, we need to see what we can do to help you. Hopefully, there's some type of exemption or grant filed in due to the storm, but...
Well, they said it had to be a deed before 1991. Mr. Meeks looked into it. He said it was sold in December of 1991, and the deed was supposed to be before that, and it was a bunch of acres before that. So, I'm like stuck.
If we can get with you afterwards, we'll see if we can figure out a way to try to help you.
I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Excuse me.
Welcome, sir.
Hi.
Yes, sir, welcome.
Thank you.
Name it.
My name is Adney Wing. I live at 8443-137th Road. That would be on the southwest side of the airport. And my concern is, we own about 23 acres there, which runs, I live on the corner of 139 and 137, southwest side of the airport. It's pretty rural there, and it's a big dumping ground. I met Officer Klein with Fish and Game. He came out and took care of a carcass here about a year and a half ago. I picked up tires. There's so much trash that gets thrown there, and I got to say, I had a good experience one time anyway with the road commissioner. I went up and talked to him, and they got right on it. Within a couple of weeks, I was surprised, they took care of the problem. Second time, not so good. I couldn't get anything back, but I didn't, I wasn't persistent. I just wondered, is there anything that you can do in the way of possibly beautification for Swanee to get the word out here? I see $500 signs on the roads for trash being thrown out, and I don't think anybody ever gets a ticket for it, and it seems like it's probably the same people I pick up trash in my yard all the time.
Yes, sir.
And that stretch of road, I own from 137 right to the curve where the approach for 25 starts on the airport.
What was your last name again?
Wait, W-I-M-G.
Wing.
Yes, sir.
And you live next to the airport?
Yes, I live right on the airport. And my wife and I are both pilots, and we're very active in the Experimental Aircraft Association, Catfish Squadron 797, and we will be also having Wings Over Swanee on October 5.
Glad you mentioned that.
If you would, maybe hang around afterwards. Commissioner Hale is your commissioner. I'm going to meet with him privately, see if there's something that he might could do to help you. He's very familiar with that area, so I would, I mean, I'm not passing the buck, but that's in the backyard, certainly.
I'm open for suggestions. Thank you.
Got you. Commissioner Hale, you handle that. Yes, sir. Okay. Mrs. Candy?
Candy Madaleno, 935830th Trail, Swanee Springs. I would like to thank you all for approving the water management to lock up the Swanee side of the spring road because it was like the very next day, they got out there with the lock, and they stopped parking on the bridge and going back and forth, and I was concerned about someone driving out there and trying to turn around, and you cannot do that, bumping into the bridge or driving off on the other side and having problems. And you know, the kids out there kind of do foolish things, so I was rather concerned. So, I appreciate the fast action. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Name and address. Anyone? Mr. Cooper, see, he has, bringing his hand back there. Welcome, sir.
Welcome. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
What I'd like to talk about today is considering to be put on the docket, the amended Swanee County ordinance of, it should, will be number 2024-L5, Section 1, LDR 2302, 4.1924, item number four, has to do with A1 zoning development districts, okay? Has to do with RV parks and regulation campgrounds. We're looking at a modification that the campground should not be closer than 10 miles instead of five from the nearest boundary of an existing RV park and campground, whether it's private or public, and also the length of stay can only be for six months.
Mr. Cooper, he would round the round of the clerk here. Name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. 2218, County Road 250, Live Oak, Florida. Any second rank to first intended. So, yeah, so we'd like to introduce that for the docket.
Okay. Would you hand that to the county attorney there? Well, that'll be fine, but right now, we're in a moratorium. Yeah, we have a moratorium on the RV parks anyway, but if you'd like to hand that your requested changes to the county attorney, that would be good, too. If you have, I saw you had some papers there, so...
Okay, very good. Okay, and then the last, second thing, the Swanee dump site, okay? The, everybody else seems to have the fences okay, except for by us, Dollin Park, the fences are down, looks like a tank ran over the thing, and I was wondering. I asked somebody there, and they said, well, they're waiting on a bid.
Mr....
Okay, I don't know. What bid are they waiting for?
Mr. Scott, you want to address that, the chain link fence there? I think he's talking about the Wilbur, I mean, the down park collection site, right?
Collection.
Yeah.
You may just follow up with me after the meeting, or talk about it.
Did that, either one, whatever.
If you just follow up with me, I'll discuss that.
Okay, because, you know, the lady was saying there that actually takes dumps, that we're the only one that looks like a tank ran over.
There's several.
Oh, there are? Okay. I didn't know that.
Yeah, there are several that need ventilators.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thanks for talking, Mr. Angel. Welcome, ma'am. Name and address for the record.
Hello, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here actually to represent the organization, so don't be rude or open, please. I'm here representing Hopeful Actos for People Everywhere, H-O-P-E. We are a community nonprofit organization, so I'm here to introduce the organization and what we're planning to do. Mark already started our first project as a community. So, to the county, city, and planning and zoning, we, the people, have a message for you. Hopeful Actos for People Everywhere and the community of Live Oak and Dollin Park believe that open and transparent decision-making is the best protection of property rights. We believe the government openness and transparency are critical elements of our republic, not a democracy, as you have been preaching a little too long. Engage citizens, improve their neighborhoods. Our quality of life is enhanced, our environment is protected, our communities are supported when local government planning respects the rights of everyone. Public participation leads to more thoughtful and enduring planning and build more public support for plans. We, the people, as our Constitution was written, and I wasn't born here, but I read the Constitution, it is a republic. We do not want or need your democracy, your five walls and the little corner over there in court deciding what for dinner. And your record of voting five-zero ends now on issues that threaten the entire community without proper oversight. We need to have oversight and accountability, planning and building for a better community. That citizens of this county today, represented by Hope, a community nonprofit organization, demands that all policies, ordinance, and resolutions that comes before this board be addressed in proper manner and that the citizens' rights be respected. You do not longer allow to vote five-zero behind closed doors, secrets of issues that impact our property rights, our way of life, our property values, or increase property taxes. We will challenge this board in court, like we have done already, each time you do so, and will remove you from office. You represent the people that voted for you during a normal voting process, but as an elected official, we will recall you and remove you if necessary. As Thomas Jefferson once said, "When tyranny becomes low, rebellion becomes duty." So, please, I welcome everyone here to join Hope Community and let's make a positive change. So, thank you for your cooperation and your support. We will try to push a couple of changes to the LDR, the ordinance around five miles. We need to push that, or you put every RV permit on a commercial area, not on our land, not on our culture. And we have a lawyer, so if we need to ball her in any decision-making with the forward, we will bring her to talk to you.
Yes, ma'am. Would you mind stating your name and address for the record?
Anna Bamber, Anna Bamber, after Road 250. Thank you.
You get that? Anna Bamber. Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Any one? Ellen. Wesley Wright. Welcome, sir. Name and address for the record.
Wesley Wayne Wright, 1667229th Road in McAllen. In light of everything that's already been discussed, maybe this may not be the best time to bring this up, but, fellas, I'm late to the dance based on y'all's decision at the last meeting to waive the fire assessment, vacant land for nonprofits. I know that it amounts to pennies, nickels and dimes to our county budget, and I love my church, so I tie it to my church. But nonprofits don't get any break from Swanee Valley or Florida Power Land. I think you've made, I don't, I don't, let me say it this way, I don't agree with your decision, and it doesn't mean a whole lot, but in the long run, you may end up running across a situation where you got a nonprofit like, I don't know, Satan's Sentient Suites or Biden's Bed and Broccoli. I don't know. It can be, it can be some, trust me, when I was chairman, I had some wiccans that called, they didn't like us praying. I'm just saying that just, you open up the door for opportunities, you're going to end up, if somebody comes in and they make the same, they're going to get the same result, I mean, the same benefits, and there's going to be people that don't agree with that. I understand that, we live in a free country, but I just don't think that it's right for a fee service to be waived. They already get a break on tax, on property tax, but just like solid waste and fire, you gentlemen know better than most anybody, these are fee services, and that's all it amounts to. I just, I disagree with you waiving that from nonprofits.
I think that, if you would say it personally, I think that previously they were waived, and I don't remember the year, but the problem that we ran into is we had several churches that had, I'm going to say a lot of churches, that hadn't paid that because they weren't, they weren't used to being assessed, and that changed, and what was the year?
About four years.
About three, about four or five years. So, four or five years ago, the county started doing that, unbeknownst to me and probably any commissioner sitting up here, so we had, there were some tax certificates out there that were being tossed around in some churches.
I saw it.
Yeah, at the, so I think the intention was good, hey, these churches don't need to lose their church to a tax deed for $200.
I agree. I understood the context and the background of what was going on, and so I'm not, I'm not up here to condemn y'all, I just, I think you need to be, I'm not trying to tell you what to do, but we need to be careful as we go forward. I just, I think it's a bad direction. I think it's a wrong decision to go that way.
Well, I would agree with you, I would agree with you that I don't know that, I don't, I didn't think about the backside that you just mentioned and the, those possibilities. What was in front of us was, hey, we got some churches here about the, there's companies that are going to be filing for tax deeds and take, take those churches.
I don't want that to happen. Like I said, I love my church, and I, and so I understand the conversation.
I understand what you're saying.
And so, whether it's right or wrong is a whole nother deal, and I wasn't trying to get weighed off into those weeds that much. Just be careful, gentlemen. I know y'all are smart fellows, and just be thinking forward and ahead of what's facing, because again, you can get some crazy, I'm going to say it because I believe it, there's going to be some crazy stuff that can happen and come along, and then we're subsidizing stuff that, you know, would just contrary to our community.
I don't disagree with you at all, and I think that hopefully, what we can do going forward is, is what we did the other night was cleaning up a mess that was happening for some good, good situations, churches. Going forward, we may need to look at...
And I know monetarily, it's no, it's no big deal. It wasn't the money. It's just the principle of it. I just, be careful, fellas.
I understand. Thank, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Wayne Wright. Anyone else, some others wishing to speak? Seeing now, we will move forward. Next item on the agenda is proclamations and presentations, and we have a presentation by Robert Ford. Presentation proclamation proclaiming June 19 as Juneteenth Day. Mr. Robert Ford. Welcome, Mr. Ford.
Chairman, board, audience, again, I'm Robert Ford. I'll just state my name and my address for the record, just in case, you know, since it's a gender item, but my address is 8896-135th Loop, Live Oak. And this proclamation, I will read it for the board and the audience. A proclamation of the Board of County Commissioners of Swanee County recognizing and celebrating the importance of June 19 as Juneteenth, whereas Juneteenth or Juneteenth Independent Day, Independence Day commemorates the traditional observance of the end of slavery in the United States and is observed annually on June 19. And whereas President Abraham Lincoln declared that in giving freedom to the slave, we assure freedom to the free, honorable alike in what we give and what we preserve, we shall nobly save or meaningly lose the last best hope of earth. And whereas on January 1, 1863, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation of Proclamation declaring that all persons held as slaves within any state or designated part of a state shall then henceforth and forever free. And whereas President Lincoln correctly believed slavery to be in violation of the principles of the Declaration of Independence and that its abolition represent a new birth of freedom for the United States. And whereas more than two years would pass before the news reached African-Americans living in Texas, when on June 19, 1865, Union Major General Gordon Granger and his regiment arrived in Galveston and spread the word that slavery had been abolished. And whereas the following year, the first official Juneteenth celebration took place in Texas and have continued across the United States throughout the years. And whereas emancipation in Florida would proclaim, was proclaimed in Tallahassee on May 20, 1865, and for this reason, Floridians traditionally celebrate Emancipation Day on May 20. And whereas Juneteenth is the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery. And Juneteenth is an important opportunity to honor and to honor the principles of the Declaration of Independence and celebrate the achievements and contributions African-Americans have made and continue to make in Swanee County, the state of Florida, and across the United States. Now, therefore, we, the board of, we, the board, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Swanee County, Florida hereby proclaim June 19 as Juneteenth and encourage all citizens to commemorate, celebrate, and educate themselves and others about the meaning and to appreciate the freedoms to all it represents. Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd like to make a couple of comments.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. To Mr. Beasley, I didn't see him when I came in. He's the one who, I guess, submitted this request to get Juneteenth as a holiday, and I want to address this to him right here. I know he may be somewhat disappointed that it did not, it was not approved as he had hoped, but I wanted to tell him that he don't have a reason to hang his head in disappointment. Now, I've been living a long time, and I realize that progress is made more likely occur incrementally, step by step, so I want to encourage him to keep on advocating in a sincere manner. As a result of his request to make Juneteenth a paid county holiday, we have this awesome proposed proclamation by the Board of County Commissioners. At this point, his efforts, you know, has given us something more than a paid holiday. His efforts has given us this teachable moment. So, you may ask, you know, what is a teachable moment? You know, one definition of a teachable moment is described as a time when learning a particular topic or idea becomes possible or easier. Another definition of a teachable moment is an unplanned situation that creates a fertile environment for learning and understanding. That is what this proclamation offers us, this teachable moment. I want to commend the author, whoever wrote this proclamation. I suspected it was Mr. Marsh, and that he wrote, it's a very comprehensive document, and it does indeed offer us a teachable moment. All the high points was hit on this proclamation, and words lack opportunity, encourage, commemorate, educate, celebrate, appreciate achievements and contributions. Mr. Chairman, I don't want to abuse your latitude, but I want to go on to kind of let you know who Mr. Kenny Beasley is and his pedigree, probably to some of the board members. Mr. Kenny Beasley is the son of one of Swanee County's social justice giants, the late Mr. Samuel Beasley Senior. We have today, what he had, we have created the single member district that is created today with largely credit to Mr. Samuel Beasley Senior and a handful of other citizens from the county. Before the mid-1980s, the county commissioners, the school board members had to run a countywide election. This principle diluted minority representation, and at the time, minorities constituted over 30% of the county population and was not represented on the Board of County Commissioners of the school board. Mr. Samuel Beasley and his other citizens sued the county in federal court, resulting in the consent decree creating the old District 2 in the county, which was a minority, majority minority district, paving the way for minority representation on these boards. Mr. Samuel Beasley was also the first African-American in Swanee County to be elected to a political office when he was elected to the city council in the mid-1980s. Commissioner Perkins, I want to thank you for asking me to read this proclamation. Commissioner Perkins, I wanna thank you for asking me to read this proclamation, and I wanna thank the board, you know, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to speak for this esteemed board and the audience this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Ford, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Ford, for that, that was very well done. Next. Oh, we need to talk about adoption, we need to vote on that.
Yes, sir.
Motion, sir.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hale, I have a second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries five to zero. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have items three through twelve on the consent, any questions, comments, and signs? I have a motion by Commissioner Perkins to approve, so they could, second by Commissioner Hale, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries five to zero. Next item on the agenda is the constitutional officer items, any constitutional officers present wishing to speak? Mr. Beasley walks in. Welcome, sir, your ears must have been burning. Mr. Ford just says some really nice things about you. He's over, he's over there.
Thank you, Ford.
Well, boy, are you gonna talk to us, or?
Yeah.
Okay. You're a little bit late, but we'll let you go ahead and go since we just finished, you have, you played an integral part in.
Thanks, sir.
So go ahead, name and address for the record first.
Kenny Beasley, seventeen seventeen North East Davis Street.
Well.
I'd like to thank y'all for taking the proclamation and doing the assessment, and I appreciate it, it's a big step in the thing building that, hopefully, we can make it to a holiday. I just got through talking with a guy on my way coming here, he said he, remember before they did the dugout, that they came all the way from Thorpe Union to plant the maple on Juneteenth. It wasn't, you know, they, you know, he said he was about nine or ten years old when they done it, but he said he remember coming to town and planting the maple, maple. And I, I was really glad to hear that, and he really made my day, you see. And thank y'all for taking that up on consideration.
Yes, sir. And that proclamation just passed, I don't know if you heard us when you walked in or not, but that just passed.
Thank y'all, be safe.
Thank you.
Baby steps is always a, a good thing.
That's right, absolutely.
Be safe.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, back, where were the constitutional officers? Seeing now, staff items, any staff wishing to speak tonight? Mr. White, welcome, sir.
Thank you. Commissioners, I just wanted to give you a quick update about the community paramedic program. We came here a few months ago and asked you to support us on this program, and we asked for approval for some grants, and I just wanted to let you know how that was going. So we're wrapping up our Florida Department of Health grant, which was forty-one thousand dollars, we got that completed, and we actually were approved for the opioids settlement grant, and we have received our first draft of eighty thousand dollars, and we got to receive a second draft. As you were aware, when I came, I brought firefighter paramedic Michael Taylor with me, and I just wanna let you know she's been instrumental in helping us get this thing off the ground, to get it started. Some of the data that we had to present to the Florida Department of Health, I wanted to share with you. We had at times, in a three-month period, we had ten patients that had called nine-one-one for services, emergency services, thirty-eight times. We were able to enter them into the program and assess them and connect them with the, things that they needed and resources that were available. In doing so, we reduced that thirty-eight calls to two calls. We're seeing a great success in this, and that gave us a ninety-five percent reduction in calls just in non-ten patients. We hope that we get able to continue this, and we foresee in the future that we're gonna have probably a speed. Thank you for supporting us.
Thank you, Mr. White, appreciate that information. So the thirty-eight, the, the ten folks that had called thirty-eight different times, those are folks that you were able to implement into that program to maybe reduce the call load and get them some help?
We identified them as frequent flyers, and we immediately started assessing their situations, and it was, you would be amazed at some of it, some of it was transportation issues, some of it was medication issues, some of it was getting connected to the right healthcare that they needed, and others of it is just needing some assistance. So it was, it's been very successful, we continue to grow it, we're working on advertising it and really getting it pushed out. So I, I really think this is gonna be something that we wanna see more of.
And all of those funds were used for that opioid, without selling the money that we're able to, you know, pay the personnel to do that, you know, like you said, maybe reduce the frequent flyers, get the help that they need. Yes, sir.
Why, he's there, if you would, just, what you're saying about advertising for public knowledge, can you put it, put it out there, how to contact someone the easiest way, someone you know, or?
Absolutely. So we have a dedicated phone number for the community care medicine program, it's three eight six three six four thirty-four twenty-one, or they can call the fire rescue office, and we'll get them in touch with people, and we can see what we can do with them. We usually, this process is we go through a application process, and we see if they qualify, and then we assess their needs and see what we can do to help them. And then we also, we follow up with them. We have some of our key members that's joined this program that we still to this day stay in touch with, even though they pretty much graduated.
Very good, very good, I'm glad that the, the, those funds are available when the county was able to, like other counties, put those to good use and try to help folks.
Yes, sir, well, we're, like I said, we're working on getting brochures together, start getting community events, really pushing the word out, what we're all about, and how we can help.
Very nice, anyone else? Yes, sir, so, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. White, three eight six three six four three four two one.
Correct.
The community assistance program through?
Community paramedicine program, yes.
Paramedicine, I missed that part, paramedicine. Yes, sir, Commissioner Perkins.
Mr. White, is that any particular age group that you could help in all of that, it doesn't have age group?
There, there is no age group, anybody's eligible, if they have the need, and it's something that we can do, we will do it. We hope in the future that we can get into OD and postpartum. We're finding that there are some crises going on there, and because we don't have them type of services here at the other county health department, we're trying to incorporate that into our program and how we can help them people.
Very good, anyone else? Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you.
Appreciate you very much. Any other staff, any other staff items? Seeing now, we went along to commissioner items, any commissioners have anything to speak about? I, I do, I don't see Mr. Pinko, Mr. Pinko here, he's not, Mr. Pinko?
Um, just for public knowledge, and I, I believe most of you guys probably know or have heard, but our county building inspector is now an official building official, you know, he passed all of the six or seven different tests, and all his credentials are now gone, he's actually building official, which is a pretty significant achievement, so I just wanted to publicly acknowledge him and that achievement, that's, that's a pretty big deal to get there, so Swanee County now has our own licensed building official. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Scott or Mr. Meeks, but I believe currently the county is up to roughly an estimated two thousand inspections a year?
Yes, sir, we, we exceed that, I've, I've done some rough figures, and I tried to exclude some of the higher numbers that we had that were well over three hundred a month, but we're well over two thousand inspections.
So two thousand and twelve, that's, that divided by twelve, twelve months, that's a hundred and sixty-plus a month Mac at one part-time inspector are doing, so if you think about a hundred and sixty-plus stops, I mean, that's, that's a lot.
Yes, sir. I'd say true, it's a massive job, you know, going through these county capital and working. We're very fortunate to have somebody like Max to do this, because a lot of counties now suffer from building inspectors. Nor to tell you that now, ours, he's gonna be retiring pretty soon, and that's already losing their, their chief inspector, and if you have a chief inspector, look at this, you have one or another. Next city now losing their chief inspector, Troy Cruz be leaving, so we're, we're quite fortunate to have him. And another, I had a call the other day, and I called him to meet survivors, one of the guys called him, and he, he very lovely, Max, he, city had a inspector, and gave him a cap on the guy until he left here, I don't know what money. But anyway, I'm not seeing him get more money. But anyway, uh, Max, he's worked with all the deep, with all the contractors, and they're very great out too, and tried everybody by, this man has spent time over, and he, you know, maybe summer of the night trying to make inspections. And, uh, one young man called me, you know, put inspection, and he told me it'll be a couple of weeks out before Max can get to him. I know thirteen days, so I talked to him all about it, and he said, can we do a person? And he did do a person, once he did get that young man put inspection, you know, the rain was happening out there, collapsing stuff. So I'm just saying that he gets going on the board to do stuff, and so he's very fortunate to have Max on, on the team.
Hundred percent, and I'm glad you shared that, 'cause that's kinda your world on a daily basis, you know, that, that construction world, so I appreciate you sharing that with us, and we all, Swanee County's blessed to have our own building, building official, so.
Don't figure like that.
Yes, sir. Uh, any other commissioners have any things? Next item on the agenda is county attorney items, item thirteen, Scott, discuss with possible board action acceptance of real property offered to be donated by Thomas and Beldad Fender.
Mr. Morrison? Sounds good. Hopefully I pronounced that correctly. Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I got a phone call late last week from a Thomas Fender, it's B A N D E R. He owns a parcel of real property over in Swanee River Park Estates, which the county already owns at least one of it a lot over there, 'cause I'm involved in that lawsuit trying to clear the title. But anyway, he offered to donate it to the county, and he was very candid, just to the why, he just doesn't wanna pay taxes on it anymore, he can't seem to sell it, so. He's offered it to the county, but I don't have the authority to accept it, so it's up to y'all, so. If y'all wanna accept it, then I can, I'll need authority to do that on behalf of the county and process the paperwork, and if you don't, I'll just give a call back and say, okay.
Pleasure, the board. Looks like it'd be a cord breaker or something.
Cord breaker is what I'm looking at there.
In Swanee River Parks, I would assume that's probably a flood zone, that's one reason why it's probably not of a significant value, looks like the.
He wasn't advertising the reasons it wouldn't sell to me.
A lot of the subdivision has not been developed, so a lot of the lots are just, you know, wooded, and the roads went to them are wooded, so back in the day, there was a process where people would come up and visit, and they bought little goods, and they bought their dream and, and paid for their dream, and dream didn't work out like they wanted to, but we've got several of these properties there. And from time to time, as you're aware, we'll go through and analyze what properties the county has, see what we wanna dispose of, and try to get a few dollars for those, so, you know, I think, you know, the wishes of the gentleman to get rid of them, and if we took them, worst case scenario, we, you know, be in the same condition we are now, where you don't wanna pay taxes, but hopefully we can sell them at some point, along the others, and get an idea. I would refer to the county attorney for other opinions.
I mean, if, I mean, go off what you said, Mr. Scott, if we accept it, one day we can sell it. If we don't accept it, then that ain't happening, so not to be too on the nose about it, but that's just how it is.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir, Commissioner Perkins.
So the worst is always that we not give them the actual, that's always what we, you know, if, if the county takes it over.
Yes.
If we take it over, it would go, it would no longer be on tax rolls, but with the market, I mean, just for the public's information, the ones that may not have saw this, the twenty twenty-four working values are fifty-one hundred dollars. Tax, the total taxable was, you're not talking about a lot of money, that's coming off the tax rolls if we take it. Now, the, the, in my opinion, the, the con, if you will, pros and cons is, what, what are we gonna do with it? And, you know, um, yeah. Apparently, apparently he hasn't. So, I mean, I'm just thinking out loud, you know, are we taking someone else's problem, or, you know?
Mr. Tim.
Not to be too on the nose, as the county attorney says, but.
Question, I, I don't believe this gentleman has, I don't know if he has, he offered it to any of the adjoining landowners?
That's what I thought too. He made it very clear he tried. How about this, him giving it away was an option of last resort?
That's wild, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Commissioner.
There's another side I was gonna ask, but, but the tax side, what's the upkeep on this, I don't know, guess of the state, but then the, the, I guess, code of enforcement, was that growing up, you gotta keep the mode and all that, like you.
I don't think there's a H O eight or anything out there.
But we, there though. Cost you all. Other than a little bit of taxes, we're not gonna get, that's only dollars.
A few dollars.
Few dollars. I'll make a motion to accept it.
Well, let's, let's.
Well, hold up a minute, we might be, we might be in spirits in our thinking here. One of the, one of the reasons it may have been offered to the county is that the board of county commissioners owns two lots that are immediately to the west, so there's one lot in between where this one's at, so. Could have been that, now far as flood zone goes, there's a little bit of flood zone on the north side of the lot, but the entire lot itself is not located in the flood zone. But, I mean, that road does not exist, it's a big trail. We, I used to play paintball down.
So, Mr. Meeks, did you just, did you just admit the trespassing?
I'll see now, the county went on it again, and you can relive your childhood.
Somebody was just commenting about history of his deeds. Might have been him. Um, yeah, I'll go outside, I'm, I'm kinda indifferent.
Me too, but.
We do have a motion, I think we have a motion and a, and a second. A motion by Commissioner White, and we have a second by Commissioner Perkins, Mr. Ford. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries five to zero.
And then, Mr. Chairman, if I could, just ask the board to grant me plenary authority to execute documents necessary to effectuate the acceptance of the property in the draft appropriate paperwork. Swanee.
And a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Perkins, authorizing county attorney to associate the paperwork with the transaction.
And authorize me to accept it on the county's.
Authorizing, authorizing him to accept it on the county's.
Motion and a second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries five to zero.
Mr. Chairman, there's two other items which are not on the agenda, but which the chairman's aware. First is just to bring the public up to speed about an action we took at the last meeting of the board regarding renewal of the local state of emergency. And with some research and talking with adjacent county attorneys, an ongoing issue is we have to renew the L S E. The shorthand for this, if I slip into it to everybody, I apologize, is an L S E, has to be renewed every seven days pursuant to statute, and sometimes rounding county commissioners up within that seven-day period can be a little bit of a, of a chore to get everybody there at the same time. To be clear, that's never been an issue to date, however, they were talking about a way to alleviate that. So the way the statute reads, it says that the political subdivision shall renew it every seven days, it's not specific to the county commission, and in coordination and speaking with several other board certified county, local government attorneys, and it's one of the solutions that has been reached is basically to authorize at the, at each meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, so for example, a regularly scheduled meeting of the board, which this is, the board would have the authority to grant the local state of emergency or to not do so. In the meantime, 'cause there will be obviously more than seven days between now and the next regularly scheduled meeting, it authorizes the chairman, if not the chairman, then the vice chairman, and gives him the authority as, only, only one of those two can sign it, to act as the chairman, to act as the agent of the board, I D. the political subdivision, to authorize them to renew it for an additional seven days, the authority is very limited just to, they literally. The authority is very limited just to, they literally have to sign the form, the exact same form of the resolution, and, but that'll authorize the renewal as contemplated by the statute, and then that will, if there's an intervening meaning of the board of county commissioners, that will supersede, and that will take over and take away that authority. So, it's essentially a stopgap between meetings of the board of county commissioners. The last resolution we were at, the board voted and opted to adopt that kind of procedure to eliminate the need to have unnecessary meetings of the board of county commissioners, or if the only issue on the agenda is renewal of an L S E in the context of, let's just, we got to keep it going for contract purposes, but obviously that's without prejudice to the right of the board to, if something happens, to get together to do what have you. So, anyway, I just wanted to bring the public up to speed that that's the form, in the absence of an emergency, we won't be having the seven-day renewal meeting where we all get together and have donuts at great expense. So, that being said, having brought the public up to speed on that, but there's no questions. The other issue that's not on the agenda, that this is a regularly scheduled meeting of the board of county commissioners, is a renewal of the local state of emergency, and so I just, if the pleasure of the board is to continue with the state of emergency, then we need a motion and proposed order. All right, my motion and a second, I'm sorry.
I'll go with a motion on Commissioner Perkins and a second with Commissioner Hale. All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Mr. Morrison, you say that too?
Just bringing the public up to speed and reauthorizing the L S E.
Okay. Um, so if he's done, next item on the agenda is the consultant items. Any consultants present wishing to speak tonight?
I'll get up.
Real brief, real brief. Name and address for the record.
Jimmy Pittman, representing Pittman Engineering, and I just want to let the board know that last week DOT approved the county to proceed with the advertisement for the County Road Forty-Nine Widing Resurfacing Project, and we're working with Greg and Brandon to get that started real soon.
Very nice. Very nice. Very good. Thank you, sir. County Road Forty-Nine, we'll start seeing improvement soon. Any more consultants? General business? I don't think we had any general business items. Any more additional good items, Mr. Scott? County administrative items?
Just wanted to let you know that for the public, that one thirty at night, Road and Eightieth Cars, the pavings can be there. There's still some touch-up things we need to do with, uh, permanent painting and others, but that, those are just the pave. Here are positive comments from the neighbors, so that's going forward. We are in the process of ranking in that couple days the C I for Seventy-Sixth Street for that project, and we're moving forward that project, and back to approval soon.
That's really bad.
Pretty short for you today?
Trying to, trying to understand that we have a shortage in it, and we'd like to keep it moving on.
Very well.
I just say, thank you, Mr. Scott.
Great job, by the way.
Part of District One, and I do appreciate you guys.
Yes, sir, it is. You did a great job.
Good deal. Thank Mr. Scott, commissioner items, board members. Mr. Perkins, I'll start with you, if that's all right?
Yes, sir.
Close the comments.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Thank you for when they came out of our concern system. Thank you for all you have put, uh, with great ability. This grill to, that great accomplishment, they have to win the Fieldberry Award, they won there.
Nationwide.
Twenty thousand, yeah, nationwide, and had some, that great technical, and had some great food, too. I tried to take part in it, it was fabulous, but I did get a, the biscuits, uh, like, very good. Very good. It was great time, so we, and to thank all of our employees here for the county, giving thanks for Max, does a great job, and all the other department years are doing a great job, so it's going to be the, you know, great, the military, keep it thing alive, so.
Well said, sir. Commissioner Horbly?
I thank our staff and everybody for coming, and remember to keep Brother Wes, thanks for laying your prayers, we're about to tell a battle, and, uh, talk Ronald Smith today, and Mr. Bart's out of the hospital. He's doing fairly good, so.
Good.
Yep.
Good, good. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hare?
Also, thank everyone for coming out, and I was going to ask Mr. Scott to give an update. We still are, the roadside pick-up is going through the seventh, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure that, and thank, thank you to our staff, I know we all mentioned it, but those guys out there, those tractors and boom trucks and.
They can't catch a break.
Man, I'm telling you, they can't. I see them at the work of the butts off for people of Swan County, so if you see one, wave at them to, go on and do something. They deserve it, that's for sure. Other than that, I would say keep Jay George, Daryl Harrell, and Mr. Bart in your prayers, please. Pray for your neighbors, my friends.
President, Commissioner Hare, Commissioner White?
If y'all want to give any money for the Fourth of July, see Stacy Griffith down there for the town of Bradford for the Fourth of July.
The fireworks?
Yep. So, like.
She said you were sponsoring this year.
I'm a sponsor of some of it, every year, but not all of it. But, we'd, we'd be glad to have all of you on that end of the county on July the Fourth, so, just throwing that out there.
Yes, sir.
Challenge with you at that on the corner.
Oh, your own.
Put it down, give it a statement.
Say, so you got that Commissioner Perkins has challenged Commissioner White or vice versa to a cornhole game?
What kind of ratty shirt you got to wear?
I don't have one, either. I was just going to congratulate Commissioner Perkins, said it earlier, uh, Thomas says yes. Robbie and Becca, she won a nationwide, she said baking contest for General Mills in Hillsbury. She was a nationwide winner of her dessert. That, they had a little ceremony today at noon at Dixie Grill where they did sliders and honored her dessert and General Mills. Representative, they presented her with a twenty thousand dollar check, first question. So, hats off to the Thomas family, they represent Swan County, well, we should proud of that, so. July Fourth, which we'll be saying it again, I'm sure, Bradford, big festival Thursday down there, so. Anything else, guys? I need some motion to. Mr. Brothers?
No, I understand there's going to be a, at the city hall here, there'll be a meeting next Monday, a kind of candidate forum at six-thirty.
Yes, sir, there's a voters' league forum, Mr. Ford's here, he's, they're presenting, voters' league presenting, I think the county commissioners and the school board.
School board, right.
And school board.
Next Monday, six-thirty in the city hall.
Next Monday, six-thirty. Last night was sheriffs and tax collector and.
Right, and constitutional officers.
Constitutional officers. So, that's, Mr. John?
I think Mr. White will be conducted with two at the Fourth of July.
Oh, is that right? I want, can we get him in the pie, the pie contest? That would be good, whipped cream pie, I'll sign up for that.
I ain't getting in unless y'all put some bleach in it, this year.
Did Commissioner Hale be in it?
I don't know.
Well, it's funny, it's funny you mention that, because somehow I've got signed up,